Well, we're going to get started. Jim should be here in a couple of minutes. Welcome to our meeting. We're going to start with the Pleasure Allegiance, please.
Thank you very, very much.
Pleasure Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this state is rooted in, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting. Perfect timing. Our regular meeting of April 6th. And the first item on the agenda, business item on the agenda, is consideration of the minutes of a series of meetings. The regular meeting of March 16th and a series of budget meetings, most of which were combined with the Board of Selectmen and Finance. There's a whole slew of them in the packet, and I would ask the board if they're prepared to -- I know they've got them in advance, but if you need another two weeks, we don't have to do it today. It's kind of a big pile, so it's up to you whether you want to consider making a motion or you want some more time to review them.
I'm ready. I just need to ask a couple of questions on one and maybe make one on the other.
Did you have a chance to take a peek at some of them?
But I'm willing to wait as well.
They were approved by the Board of Finance, I believe, without adjustments.
I only have changes from the most recent.
Okay, well then let me move them for consideration. This is a series of meetings from March 16th through March 29th, of which they were all the combined budget hearings. There were a total of nine budget meetings, as well as the special budget voting meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and our regular minutes of our regular meeting from March 16th. So I'll move those for consideration and approval.
Okay.
Second, is it second for discussion? Seconded by Jim. And I'll just open the floor if there's any corrections or questions.
Well, one's a question. On the March 16th minutes, that's when we were talking about Mr. Ralph from the parking authority. Did you confirm that that's your appointment solely?
Yeah. It's ironic because there were one or two.
And I did say, I sent her a text.
Yeah, you sent me the text. I saw that.
Did I send it back? Okay.
Yeah, I sent the little blurb, but yeah, it's a parking and there's one other authority. There's a few other authorities that state statute just says the chief executive. She has done commuting. She's not an active commuter today. She said she's sporadic, but she has had a lot of years as a commuter, you know, just to kind of go back in that. And I did indicate, you know, we should always keep that in mind for the future.
And then on the same set of minutes, but on page three, which is kind of a long carryover under, at the top paragraph, I guess about halfway down, we start talking about the amendment that I was making about moving the $450,000 out of the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed was using for their computer internet switches.
This is the combined meeting or this is the?
No, this is the our meeting, March 16th, the CIP budget we were talking about.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the combined meeting. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
It was the same set of minutes we just talked about with Mr. Ralph. March 16th, page three.
Okay, sorry, Jim. So there's an error?
Page three, I don't know if it's an error. I just wanted a little bit more clarification because about midway through, that's when I suggested we take the $450,000 of computer switches and add it to the CIP budget. And I just wanted, the sentence that says he suggested bonding BOE computer switches for the internet for all schools and we use the $450,000 in the BOE operating budget for the switches. The reason we had talked about was that I wanted to make it clear that that was if and only if the BOE was willing to commit another $450,000 to the Internal Service Fund. And I think we all agreed that was after much discussion. That was the case. I just want some clarification.
As opposed to reusing it for the same thing for the switches?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Jen, you see that? So really, it's at the end of the phrase, and reuse this $450,000 in the operating budget.
I think if and only if the BOE would use said part.
How about for supplementing the health insurance reserve?
Yes.
For supplementing the health insurance reserve, if and only if?
Well, I said if and only if the Board of Education would commit to further supplementing the Internal Service Fund for the same $450,000.
You got that? Yeah, no, that was definitely the intent.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification for all of us because I think that's the only reason we did it. I just didn't want it to seem like we were trying to take it out but let them use an additional $450,000 because that was not the case.
Jen, you pretty much got that? And if you want, you can just, you know, she can just use the language.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
But, okay, so it's an amendment to modify the language on the March 16th meetings to incorporate the requirement for the Board of Ed to fund health insurance for the balance in order to get the bonding for the switches.
Yes.
Based on the wording that Jim offered, I'm happy to second Jim's amendment to the minutes.
Second.
Sherry, second again. Okay, then just on that amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you okay not going one at a time? Or, I mean, just considering the whole, all the minutes together and then if we have any?
Yeah, we can do it all at the same time. And then in the same minutes in the next paragraph where we talked about the backhoe, that there is further conversation for the exact same purpose, that we wanted to take $100,000 out of the operating budget for Parks and Works and increase, place that $100,000 backhoe in the capital improvement program in order to, so that we can supplement and increase the internal service.
Do you want, the second sentence was probably what Jim was trying to write, but it's supposed to say?
Oh, actually, yeah, she does cover that in a way.
But it's supposed to say, could be used, how about, so, you know, instead of Mr. Walsh said, just?
Would be used, maybe would.
It was make that sentence part of the amendment?
Yeah.
So move the sentence where Mr. Walsh said $100,000 up as part of the amendment that he was proposing? And just, you know, rephrase it so that, as a capital improvement item, so that $100,000 could be used to other work that's compensation, self-insurance budget or risk retention budget?
Yes.
So we're just kind of taking those lines and flipping them and changing a few words? Okay, you want to make that as an amendment?
Yes, I would.
I'll second that. Any comment from the board on that correction? And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Carrie S. Anderson? Okay.
And then, didn't you make a motion about the $150,000 and putting that towards, remember with the $150,000 you took out of the retiree benefits because we had overfunded OPE? I know that was in here someplace.
Out of the OPE.
Yeah, I knew it was in here. I read through it.
That would probably be in the regular.
Maybe it was earlier, yeah.
I don't know. Let's see. Because, oh, you know what? That was in the regular budget discussion. Because this is the CIP item.
Yes, you're right.
So when we get to the March 29th.
Those are the only amendments I have for those.
Okay. Did you catch any goodies?
Only on the next paragraph seven, the same day, it says Selectman Walsh and Stenick felt strongly about naming the new station Fairfield Metro. I didn't feel strongly about naming it. I felt that if it was going to help, we should try, we should, if he felt, the developer felt it was going to help in some fashion, we should give them all the help we can to get it going. And I think it kind of says that below, so maybe if we just took strongly out, I don't know. Just, I don't want it to look like that's the only, you know.
Well, we'll just take this sentence out then.
I felt strongly.
All right, you could say that. Take me out of there and put Jim in for feeling strongly.
Which area will you confirm?
There you go. That'll work. Selectman Walsh felt strongly. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then Sherry's made a correction amendment to the minutes to revise that sentence for Selectman Walsh. I'll second that. Any other discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any other corrections?
Yep, the minutes from the 29th.
Okay. This is the, for our voting meeting.
Right. First page, for public executive budget session. Let's see, it says, she noted she received correspondence from senior citizens, that was many townspeople asking, it wasn't necessarily senior citizens.
Various townspeople or?
I don't care. Various, many, whatever you want to put in.
Many townspeople.
But I just want to point out, it's not, it wasn't just senior citizens.
Can we quantify that? No, kidding. Just kidding. Okay, so, Jen, you got that? Okay.
And then when it gets to asking to keep the tax increase at zero, and then I would like to have added, because this is what I said, she apologized to them because she did not think it possible to cut the 12.2 million necessary to do this.
Have it explained, apologized?
I apologized, so I don't know. I apologized, so.
Okay, that was a lot of issue. Okay. So just to add the phrase that Sherry said at the meeting about apologizing for not believing the, not believing?
I wasn't, I didn't think it was possible to do that with that much.
Possible to what?
To reduce the budget.
To reduce it by 12 point, I'll give you this at the end. It says, possible to cut the 12.2 million necessary to do this.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that amendment to the minutes.
And then this next page.
Why don't we do one at a time?
Sure, I'm sorry.
All in favor on that one?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Next page, last paragraph.
Wish everybody's patience.
When you, we got to the $400,000 cut.
Yep.
It said, first Selectman Flato, second the amendment, which carried unanimously, Selectman Stenick stating that it was a start and she hopes the Board of Finance and RTM will cut further.
Okay, so why don't you just do that before the second?
I said it at the end, so I don't know what happened.
So after the?
So after the 1.6 million.
After unanimously, comma.
We could say unanimous.
All right, period then.
Just a unanimous, Selectman Stenick, hope.
Stated that it was a start and she hopes the Board of Finance and RTM cut further. And that was it.
I do recall those comments.
I remember the exact quote.
I'll second that correction to the minutes. Any other discussion on that one? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any other corrections anybody sees? I know this, we don't usually have so many minutes at one meeting, but we should everybody's patience. I think the, all the other meetings were joint and I know that, you know what, why don't I make a, just in case, let me just make an amendment that if there were any other corrections that the Board of Finance caught, I don't think they did, but I actually got there a few minutes late when they were in the middle of it, so that if there were any other corrections to the minutes approved by the Board of Finance, that we adopt those corrections to the minutes.
Final.
Because this is kind of combined language for two boards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Followed drifted?
Yes.
So if the Board of Finance found a correction, Jim will just modify the minutes to reflect what the correction was for their comments as part of those joint meetings. Okay, on that amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else with the minutes?
Nope.
Okay, then, we're back to the main motion to approve all the minutes from the dates of February 17th through March 29th, all the various meetings in our packet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item, reform item, is approval of the tax collector recommended refunds that are on our table. And since I just signed them, I'm happy to make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie S. Anderson. Okay, we did receive a letter of resignation from Jen Hotberg from the Human Services Commission because she's just been appointed, elected, I guess, by her district to the RTM and stepped down and thanked her, thanked her very much for her service. And based on that fact, I had a number of people call me, having known you were very popular, to suggest and recommend that we consider Selma Cohen to be, serve on the Human Services Commission. Selma's with us today. Hi. Selma has been a veteran of various town boards and commissions and actually did do one term on the, on this particular commission, so I think served as the chair for over a year. So she certainly has the experience and knowledge of this commission. Happy to move the nomination.
Second.
Seconded by Sherry.
I think we might have been on that commission together. I think we might have been on that commission together way back when.
Ah, well, this motion's been moved and seconded and Selma's bio is in our packet. Is there any other comment from the board?
No, I'd just like to thank Selma for willing to go back on the board and contribute and give the town once again. And I'd also, just on, we got Jennifer Rockberg, would like to thank her for her service. And like, she's going to be going on to the RTM and we look forward to her continued service to the town on the RTM.
Thank you, Jim. From the public, if there are any questions or comments on this item, to appoint Ms. Cohen to the Human Services Commission. Seeing none, then back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie S. Anderson, congratulations. So you just have to be sworn in, you know, the usual approach, and congratulations. Okay, the next item on our agenda, item number six, is to hear and consider a, an item that we had discussed at an earlier meeting, to name something in town in honor of our former Selectman colleague Carl Dickman and former state representative Carl Dickman. And those of you that remember the meeting when we discussed it, our board said we would reconsider this in the spring, or early spring, but to give the golf commission a month to review the item because the ideas that had been suggested by the public, particular members, I remember Chairman Flynn had written us a letter and other members, other town officials had felt that this would be a fitting tribute. The golf commission did review the matter and they did send us a, I guess it was an email, but it was a memo or an email that indicated that the commission did consider the matter and made a sense of their board, a sense of their commission, that they would be very supportive of the Selectman naming a golf facility after the former Selectman. They indicated that the par three was an appropriate designation. They also felt that the driving range could be an appropriate designated memoriam naming after Carl. They did feel that the Smith Richardson course itself, clubhouse, because of the history of the property and because of the way the property is known, probably wouldn't be as fitting a location. And so based on that, and based on the consensus for our meeting, I thought I would bring it forward, so I guess I'm happy unless one of you would like to make a motion to actually consider it as we have worded it on the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion, just as it's on the agenda, just naming the par three golf course formerly, soon to be formerly, the South Pine Creek Golf Course after Carl Dickman, for all that he's done. He's former Selectman for many years, former state rep for at least 10 years, and all the service that Carl did to the town, and also his love for golf. He was very passionate about golf. He was passionate about the Smith Richardson Golf Course. He served as both vice president and president of the golf course. He served as the, for, I think, two terms as the president of the municipal golf courses. And just his passion for golf, but not only that, it was more, for me, it's more about Carl's passion of the town of Fairfield. Carl was just generally liked by everyone he met. He was always willing to do volunteer service for this town and to help any resident of this town in anything that they needed. Not only members of his 132nd district, but almost anyone. He was a strong contributor and I was one of those people he took under his wing when I first joined the RTM to teach me about Robert's rules and how we work here and how we try to work in a bipartisan manner. And he always supported that and he was always willing to contribute to the town in that regard. And based on that and based on the par three golf course being within his legislative district, I think it's, and a lot of this is following on what Tom Flynn was pushing to us and originally came, proposed the first Selectman about, I'd like to put this motion forward. I think it would be a great tribute to Carl. I think he would be extremely happy and honored that this be done. I think he'd be taken back by it, to be quite honest with you, and I think it would be a great last tribute to what he's done to the town of Fairfield.
Thank you.
I'd like to second it. He was a really humble man and a wonderful person and he was totally bipartisan. If you asked him for something and I asked for it totally separately, he would react the same way.
Without a doubt.
And so I wholeheartedly support this, second this.
Thank you, Sherry. You know, I, we know we talked a lot about this at our meeting a few months ago, but I would obviously echo the sentiments of both of you. I think you're right on. He was a wonderful person and I think the mark that Selectman Dickman made, you know, we can't, as much as we love to name something after everybody who serves town, it's very hard to do that and you really kind of wait for those special testimonials. And I think the thing that really brings this of importance is that, number one, Carl served as a Selectman for quite a long period of time, lengthy period of time, longer than most members of the actual Board of Selectmen. But I think also that his years of service as a state representative, when you combine that level of public service, you know, he certainly reached the level and the, you know, the pedestal that, that he should be honored. I just, for some of you who remember, about eight years ago, we named the Recreation Center at Mill Plain Road after former Selectman Eunice Postal. And it was a very similar situation where Eunice had served over a decade on the Board of Selectmen, but also had been involved in so many other commissions and boards for decades. And I think, you know, those folks that make a lifetime of commitment really deserve a recognition. Carl certainly deserves that. Wholeheartedly support this. So we've all made some nice comments. I'll open it up if anybody from the public would like to offer their thoughts about this motion. It's been moved and seconded. And I think if it's okay, I'm going to, I think the wording of the motion is to name the golf courses down at Pine Creek as the Carl Dickman Par Three Golf Course. Would that be okay?
Uh, yeah, yes. Yeah, I guess that'd be fine with me.
Is there a middle initial that he would use?
You know, I didn't, I don't know if Carl's ever used a middle. I never noticed one.
Can we ask the family?
You know, he doesn't have relatives in the area. I actually tried to, he has a daughter down south and I wasn't able to get her number easily, but I can find that out. So I don't include the middle initial if he did have a middle initial, but he went by, I mean, you know, because, I mean, the only reason I thought par three was only for the public, you know, you know, some people think it's a full golf, you know, 18 holes if we don't keep calling it part three. Okay.
The only thing I was thinking, question I had was, what is it called? I don't really know what the formal, I know it's South Pine Creek. I'm not sure it's South Pine Creek Golf Course.
You know, some people call it the par three golf course and some people call it South Pine Creek par three, yeah. But I think that's, that's great. So again, if anybody has any thoughts in the public, anybody who lives down by the golf course? One other thing I'd just like to say is, you know, those of you, we always love to enhance and to kind of make our courses widely used and I hope, I think, you know, the fact that, you know, Carl was so active as a senior citizen and served well into his senior years, you know, the golf course, the par three is very popular amongst seniors. And I think it's just many of those that play knew him well, and so I do think it's really, really fitting. Okay, Tom?
How about a tournament, a Carl Dickman Golf Tournament?
Well, I mean, the golf commission could always consider, I mean, I think our job is to name things after, you know, physical places, but you know, who knows, you know, down the road. They do have some tournaments down there, although most of them are with the main golf courses. But thank you. Thank you for that thought. Okay, well, thank you all very, very much. Then we have a motion moved and seconded to name this golf course for, in honor of Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Do you want to, you want to phrase it that way?
No, 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 I didn't know, I just, it's another way.
Okay. So to make it the full name, the Carl Dickman Par Three Golf Course at South Pine Creek? Or will, or maybe that's too long. What is the Carl Dickman Par Three Golf Course? Hopefully everybody will find out where it is.
I think they know where it is.
Okay, that motion was approved unanimously.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have a couple of?
Just one last, and to the extent that the sign has changed or when that is, I think it'd be nice to invite Carl's two daughters to that, just some small little, because I think they'd be really honored for their dad.
No, I agree. There'll probably be a little memorial unveiling of the, of the plaque when it gets done. And we'll ask the golf commission to do something nice on that, out of their recollection. No, they don't have a revolving fund.
You can get their telephone number, so.
Yes, yes.
That'd be good.
I'll do that.
I guess Sherry didn't have it, so that'd be good. Okay. And thank you for the golf commission for their thoughts on this matter. Okay, we're going to move to a couple of other items. Item number seven is to hear a request from the Public Works Department for an approval of two grants. One is for the Senior Center Bus Services contract with Greater Bridgeport Regional Planning Agency, and the second is a grant for the equipment to outfit a vehicle for natural, compressed natural gas. We have our Assistant Director Ed Bowman here, and I believe we have some paperwork in our packet on this item. I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve, to consider and approve both grants together because I think they're pretty simple. Items seven A and B, discuss them together if that's okay with the board.
Sure.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Jim beat you to the punch. Seconded by Selectman Walsh. And Ed, do you want to say a few words about these?
Yeah, the services granted, run by the Transit Authority, have been running for six years now. And it was a program we set up back five, six years ago. It was an outreach that home bombed elderly poor handicapped. Right now, bus service is provided by the Transit Authority to anyone who was senior handicapped and a half a mile of an existing bus room. This was to try and take that service and extend it out further on a, you know, reservation basis. But also to reach out to those people who are home bombed, have no car in the house and are really stuck there, and also our income restricted, so they really have no way to afford a cat. And that's what this service does, provide service to those people. And it's been very successful over the last five years, so there's a six-year extension of that service. The grant is 100% from the state of Connecticut, but it only matches, it's in the senior budget. As long as we're spending $63,000 in senior citizen, then we're matching the cost. And we always, we always have done that, of course. So it is dependent on passing the budget before we can assure them that actually there is $60,000 in the budget for seniors, but other than that, I want to get started.
And what I actually would like to do, if you don't mind, is just make a quick amendment to this, that we actually word this resolution as approval of the grant for the Senior Center Bus Services and to approve the accompanying resolution attached, which states that the Board of Selectmen has approved, authorized in the Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority, I said the GBRPA and I apologize, it's actually the Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority. So it's GBTA. So there's a correction on the first item?
Yes.
I didn't catch that when I reviewed the agenda, sorry for that. But to also approve the wording attached, that the Greater Bridgeport Transit Authority is authorized to negotiate and execute all necessary agreement contract documents on behalf of the town with the DOT of the state of Connecticut, and to affix the corporate seal of the town on such agreement. So if that's okay, to add that resolution as part of our resolved?
Yes.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, so that item's been moved and seconded, and then we have the second item that we've moved and seconded for the compressed natural gas. And by the way, this agreement is similar to agreements we've done the last few years.
Yeah, it's the exact same.
So the natural gas item is to basically eliminate the diesel fumes?
Well, what it does is, there is an item in the engineering budget to replace an existing ban, which is natural gas. But this gives us the additional cost to buy the natural gas vehicle. The money in the budget only replaces it as a gasoline vehicle. The money in the budget only replaces it as a gasoline vehicle. This, unless it's applied for the grant from the state to make it a natural gas vehicle and to pay for the incremental costs. That will bring, we'll have 30 natural gas vehicles if this is approved. And it makes sense. Now, we just upgraded the natural gas fueling station so it can serve a lot more vehicles. All right, upgrade, by the way, is there is also an automated reporting system, which will allow every one of our vehicles, by any time they fill up, to, to report back to the garage, not only the amount of fuel they use, the amount of miles they've driven, but the amount of emissions that are admitted or saved versus diesel. So it's an automated system for all vehicles. And that gets reported to Washington directly via our computer. So it's a very interesting project.
Thank you. And I, I, I thought we had a little page on this, but-
It was together, it was just-
Okay, you do, we do have it. Okay, it's just, it's in my packet somewhere. So I'll make a motion to, we've already had a motion to move and consider and approve this. Ask the board if there are any questions or comments?
No, it's great, both of them.
I think it's great. We don't have to pay anything for it. We get the extra services. Thank you for continuing to work on that.
And this would basically be with existing vehicles that we've already purchased and, and/or the budget?
Well, it's in the budget for next year, so, again, assuming the budget gets passed, then we'll apply for the grant. We had to apply for the grant by April 30th, I couldn't wait until May 6th, so we'll apply for it, but if the budget doesn't pass, then we just withdraw.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments in the public on this item? Okay, then we're back to the board. No further comments?
No.
And hearing none? All in favor of approving both items seven A and B together as amended? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries unanimously. All righty, the next item is to hear, consider and approve an amendment to the lease between Sullivan McKinney Elder Housing, Inc., regarding Grassmere Elder Housing and the town, and an agreement concerning the related tax abatement for the facility. There's an agreement and the, the documents in our packet, so we would be approving the associated agreements and, as per motion to hear and consider and approve this item? A move by Sherry. Happy to second that. And Eileen, you want to give us a couple of minutes on this? Welcome our Deputy Town Attorney, Ali Kinnell.
And also Carolyn Durkey, who is the chairman of the Board of Sullivan McKinney.
Welcome, Carol.
Ruth Ann Martinez, who is the new American Administrator of Sullivan McKinney are also here, so if you have further questions about the Sullivan McKinney, they will be happy to answer them. I'm sure that the three of you will remember that back in 1987, Jackie Durrell had arranged to have the Grassmere Elementary School turned into an elderly and disabled housing project. And it was at that time known as Grassmere Elder Housing. At a later date, after John Sullivan's retirement and Congressman McKinney's death, it was renamed as the Sullivan McKinney Housing, Elderly Housing. At this time, about the original time when they were, when they put the deal together to finance the project, there was a HUD loan made, which you would expect for that type of a project. And as part of making the HUD loan, there was a lease between the town and Grassmere, and there was also a tax abatement agreement between the town and Grassmere. The lease is being amended only for some very formal purposes at this time, because the current loan that's going to be made by HUD is under a different section and there have been some HUD administrative changes since 1987. So that really is just a formality. There are no changes in any substantive way, it's not extending the lease in any way. As far as the tax abatement agreement is concerned, in 1987, a tax abatement was extended to, for the period of the original HUD loan, which was to 2027. Now, in connection with the new HUD loan, they need that extended for an additional 24 years so that it will run for the full period of the new HUD loan. Again, it's not very different from the original one, it was done in 1987. There are a few formal changes to recognize the fact that there have been some changes in HUD regs since that time, but otherwise it's the same agreement. The purpose of the tax abatement is to allow the project to be economically feasible. Without the abatement, it's really not possible to provide the level of rents that are necessary to allow elderly and disabled to live there. So if you have a question, I'd have to take one.
Thank you. And I, did I make a motion? Do we second this, Jim? Move and second this for discussion? Okay. This tax abatement is an ongoing abatement, is similar to the abatement in the past, right?
Correct. It's just continuing on the one that currently exists through 2024.
So it's not affecting the taxes, the rent list or anything in terms of?
Not, in effect, it would have occurred before 2027, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just maybe before the board, I, I apologize, I just wanted to ask if there's anything else that you did want to state on behalf of, of the corporation?
Just that this is going to allow us to keep the complex up to date in terms of handicap accessibility. We have just gone through what they call a green retrofit. We have new windows, we have new doors, we have new high-rise toilets, we've gotten all of this under that. And this mortgage, by doing this, is going to take us from 9% to 4.5%, which will continue to help us in the future. We need, we need a new driveway, that all has to be redone, brought up to code. It's, it's just a matter of trying to help us not go out of the low-income business for seniors. It's, it's such a big need in this community, people don't realize it. And we want to keep it fit, we want to keep it up to code and make it a nice place for people to live. And it's basically just keeping things up to code and, you know, making it just a little bit better.
Thanks, Carol. And I believe, I mean, I think I know this, but basically the federal requirements for projects like this, you know, require the operation of the funds to solely be used for the purposes of the corporation for this, for this housing complex.
And that brings us up to date with the name changes and the, you know, all the other regulations that happen.
Great. Thank you. To the board, if there are any questions or comments on this item?
No, it's very thorough, thank you.
Hearing none? Open this to the public, if there are any questions or comments regarding this item? Great. Hearing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. You know, the only other thing I was going to say is I do appreciate the folks at Sullivan McKinney have been very helpful and cooperative in the, any joint things that are done in the facility. The town has done some repairs to the roof a few years ago, and when Pilot House moved in after Grassmere in the front of the building, they really worked together in terms of the sharing of utilities and, and things that they had to do together, so very much appreciate that.
I will say, Carol, that we have a shared facility in terms of the heat and things like that, and one of this, this retrofit thing did, we finally, after all these years, Grassmere or the school, if you want to call it Grassmere School, finally has boilers that don't conk out. And that whole utility room is now like four times bigger than it was before. The only real bad problem we have right now is still the roof. But by getting this green retrofit, we took that boiler room and they redid the whole thing and it's amazing, the room that's in there, how nice it looks, if we could almost put another apartment in there. You know, from the old boilers to what we have now, it's just, you have to come and see.
Gee, if you're willing, maybe I'll invite you to, to, next year to an RTM meeting to talk about the old boilers and how efficient they can become if they're replaced. That's a discussion for another day, I guess. Sorry. But thank you. Okay. Thank you. And I guess we're ready to run this item? Okay, then, we have an item number eight, which is, no, we're at number eight, which is to approve the amendment to the indenture of lease and the related tax abate, continued tax abatement regarding Sullivan McKinney Elder Housing, known as Grassmere Elder Housing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries unanimously. Great, thank you. Okay, we do have a private executive session. Before we start that, I just, you know, want to ask the board if there's any new business from, I have a small cookie, but any new business from the other, from the other members? Okay.
Oh, please. Point of personal privilege for a second. I just wanted to say thank you to Raymond Martin and Mike Russell, who are both in Department of Public Works. I went down to the dump and I had to get here in time and I had all these things to recycle and all their various things. They were very patient because I was right on the, the last second of going in there and waited for me to finish, and they didn't know who I was. So I just want to say, they had a really good attitude and it's so nice to have people that have a really nice attitude when you're stressed out. Thank you.
Can I just ask one other question? Maybe you can give us enough, quick, a little update. Where do we stand with this whole snow budget? Has that all been worked out?
Well, the good news is, it has not snowed in the last four days. I thought we were coming close last week. They did get the, the state did get approved for the FEMA reimbursement from that one big blizzard.
Yes.
A period of time, so I believe Public Works believes that there'll be a roughly 100, I think it was around 110 to 20,000 in the end, might have been a little higher. I can get you a recap on that. I don't think the numbers changed since that report that was handed out a month ago, but I can ask which to update it and provide it by email to us.
All right.
We are still net-net, the snow budget was over, I think net-net by over 100, by about 150 after that reimbursement.
After the reimbursement.
Yeah, yeah. But we had talked about that a few months ago.
Sure.
Thanks. Well, the only new item I have is I just did want to formally, you know, notify the board, is, as you all know, that I have accepted an appointment to become an executive with the state of Connecticut at the end of the month, and so I obviously wanted the board to know that formally, even though you all know that informally from hearing from me and I called you both at the time. And I do want for the public to let you know that we are doing a private executive session on litigation, on a litigation update and on personnel matters with two departments, but it does not have anything to do with the succession item or what will happen after I leave office. So those of you that are, that are eager to hear about that succession process are